Okay, I'd like to call the study session to order here for today. And our first item on the agenda is item number one, DR 23-88 Fast Market. And I believe Ashley is coming up. Take it away.
Thank you Chairman and Commission. Nice to be in front of you tonight. It's been awhile since I've presented. DR 2388 is for the fast market gas station. It's located at the southeast corner of Queen Creek and Val Vista. This is the Spectrum Care area. So there's a congregate living facility along with some shops along both the Queen Creek and Val Vista street frontage. Although this aerial shows vacant land to the east of the subject site, the McDonald's is either under construction or complete, I'm not quite sure, but it definitely looks like it's very close. So the site plan, it's on a total of 2.94 acres. It's zoned shopping center. It's part of that Spectrum Care PAD as I mentioned, that included a master site plan. It's also important to note that this site did receive a previous approval for a gas station and convenience store in this location. It's since expired and a new user is coming forward. So this site plan is pretty consistent with what was previously approved. I think it was back in 2019. But what they're proposing is a 5,600 square foot fast market convenience store located at the south end of the site, along with 14 fuel pumps closer to the Queen Creek frontage. They are meeting the requirements for stacking for that fuel station. One thing to note, in my staff report, in the table, I had indicated that they need 57 parking spaces. However, because this property is zoned shopping center, they actually utilize a different ratio, since shopping center shares parking across a full site, and so they park at a different ratio. So they only need 53 parking spaces. Staff is providing the applicant, as part of our second review comments, some direction to perhaps consider removal of some of the parking spaces on the south side of that fast market building. One, because they're accessed off of the primary drive, and there could be a lot of conflicts with those parking spaces there. They're not required, and not by a primary entrance to the building, so I don't think that they would be utilized that heavily. So that's one of our recommendations as it moves forward. The other thing I want to point out with the site plan is there are two existing access points, one off of Val Vista and one off of Queen Creek. So those already exist today, and those would be the ones utilized by this development. In terms of landscaping, the right-of-way landscaping has already been installed as part of that master site plan. So this applicant would be installing additional landscaping along those street frontages, but within the property lines, it's consistent with the existing street frontage landscaping that does exist within the right-of-way. In this area, the street-themed tree is sweet acacia, Chinese pistachio, and evergreen elm. And so the applicant is proposing to continue those street-themed trees for consistency. This also matches with the rest of the center. What staff is seeking some primary feedback on tonight is the elevations of the building. They are proposing a mixture of nichihua turf block and fiber cement paneling that make up the bulk of the building materials. The front elevation includes some large storefronts, and staff does believe that the front elevation provides, you know, pretty good visual interest with the movement, both horizontally and vertically. The canopies, the large storefront windows. However, staff would like commission feedback on those rear and side elevations. We are suggesting that the applicant vary those wall planes, either in height or horizontally, or introduce some additional materials to create some visual interest. The rear elevation does back up to the primary drive into the center, and so that kind of center, the gray portion that you can see, will be highly visible to the site. The other thing that I wanted to get commission feedback on tonight relative to the elevations is the context of the surrounding development. Many of the existing buildings on site use a stone veneer, and so staff would like commission's feedback if you thought that that would add some visual interest, as well as continuity with the rest of the site. So these are some examples. The McDonald's, as I mentioned, is right next door. The Black Rock and the Car Wash are both along Val Vista Road. You can even see their screen walls include columns of stone. They've also provided elevations of their fuel canopy, which does not include very much articulation. They are painted to match the building, but they don't have any additional materials. They're just concrete pillars. And so we would also suggest that the applicant make some improvements to those, perhaps the introduction of the stone on those columns. So tonight, I am seeking commission feedback on the building, fuel canopy elevations. This project, because of the size of the parcel, if the applicant were to address all of staff comments and all of commission comments, we do have the option to approve this administratively. So I would ask the commission's feedback as well, if you would like to see this in front of you again for hearing, based on the suggestions for modifications that you may have. So with that, I appreciate some feedback and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Lovely. Thank you, Ashley. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Ashley? Commissioner Gage.
Thank you. I would like to see some of those stone accents. I thought the gas pump area looked kind of plain. Something maybe could be done there or on the building, just to tie it all together.
Nice. Anyone else? Commissioner Davis, I see that red light.
All right. Thank you Chair. Ashley, I agree with you on the parking. As far as the elevations go, I mean, I like the kind of modern approach. I don't know how well the stone works with all of that. So I think if you did introduce stone, you'd have to be careful as to how you did it, because I think that could take away from that kind of cool, modern design. But I do agree, something should happen on that rear elevation. And even that side that's going to face onto Val Vista seems pretty plain. I don't know if there's like a wall plane change. I don't think so. So even some volume change or something could really help that. But I do agree with that. I could see easily where stone could be introduced in the canopy, but then if it's not introduced into the building, that might look a little odd. So I don't know, you can look at that and see if it works. Because I do like the idea of the consistency, but I also like the kind of coolness of that front of the building, and I don't know how it integrates into that. So maybe there's a way to work with the materials they have to create some of that visual interest and wrap it around the building. But I would also trust staff to work through some of those details. So I'll see what the other commissioners have to say. But I think that covered all of the things that you had brought up, so.
Thank you Commissioner Davis.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else? Vice Chairman Bianchi, please take it away.
Thanks Chair. So Ashley, we had talked about the parking spaces, if those were lost. Would that most likely get replaced with more landscaping if they took that, was that on the south side of the project?
To me, that's what would make the most sense. Obviously, we will work with the applicant on what he would propose in that location.
Yeah, I would agree on that as well. I think overall, I think it's a good use of glass along the front. I think Commissioner Davis brings up an interesting point on the cultured stone along the facade, but definitely the rear and the side elevation seem pretty sparse. So we'd like to, I'd like to see something to kind of accent that or bump that up a little bit. Yeah, I'm curious on the cultured stone, what that looks like once you start looking at it, but I will defer to our more design-related professionals up here. As far as the CDs at risk, I think if you get the first and the second review comments addressed, I'd be okay with that. But as far as bringing it back to commission, I think it's kind of up to you guys what you think. If you, if there's enough here that staff's raising, that you'd maybe want to take a look at it, or possibly move it to consent. But I don't know, it sounds like there's still some work to be done here. Thanks.
Thank you Vice Chairman. Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Anderson.
Ashley, thank you for the presentation. Regarding the stone comment, so if my tablet is kind of slow bogging down right now, but if you go to the canopy, I read a leader note that there's graced on the base, elevation two, down the bottom left-hand corner. I can't read it up here, but if I remember right, it said that there's stone along the base. Is that correct? And if so, does that meet the requirement that you were looking for?
Hi. Chairman and Commissioner Anderson, as I reviewed these plans, I didn't, I don't recall seeing that note. I'll take a closer look.
But the curious thing, is there stone on the building?
There is not.
Okay, so the note, the way it reads, if, I'm just going by memory now, I can't get it up on my tablet, and I can't read it off the screen, but it says the stones to match the building.
Yeah, I do think, I think I do see that it says stone.
Yeah.
But you're right, there is none on the building.
Okay. So if there's stone on the columns, I guess that meets at the, at the gas pumps, that probably meets the requirement that you're looking for that, correct?
Well, so there is no requirement that they include stone. I was seeking commission feedback if you thought that it would benefit the project to incorporate it, since a large majority of the buildings, I actually, I believe all of them have it.
Let me rephrase my statement. If there's stone on the columns, it meets your suggestion of adding stone to that, or like your.
I think it could.
Your request, yeah.
I think it could, yeah.
Okay. So I guess we're just down to if we put stone on the building. Okay. So personally, I kind of agree with some of the other commissioners. I don't, I think the building's articulated enough. I'm not sure the stone would really be needed to enhance it any further. So I'd be fine with the way it looks now. And it looks like we do have some stone on the gas canopy, which would kind of help it tie into the surrounding area. So I'm, I'm kind of fine with how both structures are designed right now and articulated with materials and color. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Simon, please go.
So I would agree. The only thing that I'm going to note is the rear elevation, although I do find it quite flat and could use some work, it's going to have what appears to me to be some landscaping behind there, which is going to break that up. So I don't think you're going to see just a big, flat, gray wall. So I don't know that I would have much of an issue, as long as that landscaping does go in the way that it's rendered here. If, if that landscaping's not going to go in, and this is just a rendering to get it pushed through, then I would have issue with it. So just wanted to kind of state that. Otherwise, I would agree with Commissioner Anderson with regards to the stone, if they're putting it on the columns. I don't see how it would integrate to the overall aesthetic of the building at this point. I just don't know how you'd integrate that, so that's all I have.
Thank you Commissioner Simon. Commissioner DeGravina?
I think I have really nothing else to add, but I think that's, bringing up the stone is interesting and something that should be looked at. It might not enhance the overall building as much as they thought it would initially. So I agree with the other commissioners.
Thank you Commissioner. Okay. Do you think you have all the input you need?
Chairman, I do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, moving on to number two, we have the much anticipated Z 23-10 LDC text amendment. Eva, take it away.
Good evening Chairman and Commission. As I believe most of you remember, about two years ago, we did a refresh of our entire land development code. After using this code for the two years, we've discovered a couple of Scrivner's errors, minor discrepancies, and just some topics that we think we'd like to look at again. Those are listed on this slide. The first is incidental dwelling units. The second is initiation of amendments, marijuana facilities, and Scrivner's errors. We're here this evening to see if the commission will initiate a text amendment and conduct the citizen review this evening, so that staff can further explore these topics. The first and main topic of the code amendment would be accessory dwelling units or incidental dwelling units. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the demand for these has grown. In 2021, we had six use permits for secondary dwellings. In 2023, we've had 20 so far, and hundreds of accessory structures, and the accessory structures are getting larger and more complex. Recently, due to the housing shortage, secondary dwelling units have been in the spotlight in Arizona and nationwide, and Phoenix and other municipalities have already updated their codes. Phoenix made the biggest changes. They didn't allow accessory dwelling units, and they now do allow them, because they want to grow 50,000 units in the next seven years. So they allow one accessory dwelling unit per single-family lot. It has to be subordinate to the main dwelling. It can't exceed 1,000 square feet if it's on a lot under 10,000 square feet, and it can't exceed 3,000 square feet if it's on a lot over 10,000 square feet. Maximum height of 15 feet. And they do something interesting. They have the owner sign a restrictive covenant that they will live in one of the homes. They can rent the others, but they want to make sure that you don't end up with a property with two rental units on it. Gilbert was ahead of the other municipalities on incidental dwelling units, as for many years, we've allowed both a secondary dwelling unit and a guest home on lots that are in the SF 6,000 or higher zoning. The guest homes cannot be rented, but the secondary dwelling units can. And we do have language that the incidental dwelling unit being a guest house or a secondary dwelling must be subordinate to the main home. So why do we need revisions? Well, one, there are multiple terms. We have accessory structures without living quarters, incidental dwelling units with living quarters, under incidental dwelling units, we have guest quarters, we have secondary dwelling units. We use ADU in the code, but we don't define it. And as I mentioned, we have structures that are getting more and more complex. We've looked at three indoor basketball courts in the last two months. We've had large hobby rooms, pool houses, and these structures are 2,000 to 3,000 square feet, if not larger. Some are larger than the primary residence on the property. We also state that they must be subordinate to the main residence, but we don't define this. So staff would like to explore looking at height restrictions, or size restrictions, or placements on the lot. Can they only be in the rear yard, should they have different setbacks than they do The second item to discuss is initiation of amendments. Currently, town council can initiate an amendment to the land development code, commission can do the same, and owners to a certain degree. The language shown here is that the owner can apply for an amendment to the zoning map or zoning ordinance governing their property. So while we don't want them to apply for an amendment that would affect the entire town, we want to make it clear they can apply to amendment that governs just their property. Of course, if they do have a concern town-wide, they can go through council, commission, or staff, that would then go to commission to initiate any changes. The third item for discussion is marijuana facilities. Town currently has one dispensary, and it is one of the highest grossing dispensaries in the state. Currently, our hours are 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. In looking at neighboring towns, most have hours till 9:00 or 10:00 PM. So staff would like to explore allowing later hours, hoping that this could make our dispensary more competitive, satisfy the increased demand, as noted, it is a high grossing facility, and also generate additional sales tax revenue. And the last item are Scrivner's errors. We've been using the refreshed code for about two years, and we've noticed that certain things just inadvertently dropped out. For instance, the first chart shows a landscape percentage, and it's blank. It doesn't mean we don't have one. We know what it is because of the old code. It just didn't make it into the refresh. Same thing on the next chart. The setback for front arterial, again, there is a landscape area requirement there, it just didn't make it into the chart. And there are others of these scattered throughout the code, and we'd like to look at that and explore ways to fix that. So staff's recommendation tonight is that the planning commission initiate the text amendment to the zoning regulations, and conduct the citizen review meeting specifically to address incidental dwelling units, hours of operation for marijuana facilities, initiations of amendments to the LDC, and address Scrivner's errors. So that concludes my presentation, unless there are any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Vice Chairman Bianchi.
Thank you Chair. So Eva, I was just curious, always when we talk about the accessory or the incidental dwelling units, I'm just curious to see what we, what you guys come up with and present, because I'm always, whenever we get this, I'm always be careful that we're not creating more issues than we think we're solving for. So I'm curious to see what we come up with this, on that. On the marijuana dispensary, is this something that the town is requesting, or is this something that the owner or the applicant has requested decreased hours?
Chairman, Vice Chair Bianchi, it was brought to our attention by a representative for the owner, and when we looked at other codes, we realized they were correct, and we are in agreement that we should be more in line with the other towns and allow longer operating hours.
I get it from a business standpoint. I know when we originally were having these discussions, they were talking about security and hours of operation, and that's what it kept back to. So would PD be involved in that? Would they be, would they be asked their opinion on any of that?
Chair, Vice Chair, we did reach out to the police department. They have had no calls for service to this facility since it's been operable. They even looked in the area at any crimes or calls for service, and what there was was unrelated to the facility. So they are in support of this.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? No. Well, it seems as though you've thoroughly put the text amendments together. I think it's done well, so from there, do you need us to make the suggestion for initiating the amendment?
Yes, the commission would need to formally initiate it, so staff can study it further, and then bring our recommendations back for adoption.
Is that something that we should then do a motion and a vote, or do I authoritatively say this?
I am looking at our attorney.
Let's play it safe and have the motion and vote.
I will put the motion back up.
Okay. With that being said, and there's no further comment, I'd like to open it up for a motion, if there is one.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendations, as in the staff report, for the text amendment, to initiate.
Yeah, to initiate the text amendment. Okay. Commissioner Simon has a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Vice Chairman Bianchi with the second. I assume there's no discussion, seeing none. Let's put up a vote.
And can you please do a roll call vote, as I can't operate the.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Davis.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Simon.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Chairman, me. Yes. Vice Chairman Bianchi.
Aye.
Chairman DeGravina.
Yes.
Chairman, Commissioner Gage, my apologies.
I got promoted.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Passes unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the vote.
That's the most exciting study session we've had in a while, we got the vote. All right. Moving on to item number three, Z 23-06, and another fan favorite, an LDC text amendment with Ashley. Take it away.
Thank you Chairman, and this is also a favorite topic, parking. Z 2306 is an LDC amendment for a parking code update. Commission may recall that this item was actually initiated in the summer of this year, June or July, and we are here before you today with some texts that we'd like some feedback on before we go through the effort of writing. feedback on before we go through the effort of writing the code language. So we're looking for you to provide us some feedback on the parking reduction tools that we're proposing. Just a little bit of history for those that are new to our commission. The parking ordinance, when we updated our code in 2021, we left out the parking section of the code purposefully so that we could engage a consultant to help us with this effort. So the town initiated a contract with Walker Consultants in 2022 to start that work and to provide us some recommendations on improvements to our code in a number of categories. And so then in June of '23, commission initiated this text amendment. Part of the reason that we wanted to revisit the parking section of our code is that we know that our land is really valuable. As we start to build out, it's going to become more important that we get it right. We're getting a lot of complex projects that are trying to develop on smaller sites our infill parcels, and so we really just want to take an opportunity to say, you know, are we appropriately parking our sites? So what we sought from our consultant team was to look at opportunities to simplify and modernize our code. Those of you that were on our commission in '21 may recall that that was the purpose of the refresh, was to modernize and simplify our code, and so this effort was to also do that to this section of the code. We also wanted to look at the opportunity to remove parking barriers so that we can continue to grow efficiently. We wanted to create some parking flexibility, especially as there's new innovative modes of travel. Along with that is looking at effective tools to use to be flexible with our code requirements, and then how can we streamline the review process for parking so that we're not slowing down development? Areas of interest, as we sought the study from Walker Consultants, was to explore our parking ratios and our parking requirements. We wanted to look at design standards for off-street parking as well. Do our standards currently meet, you know, best practices? We wanted to look at our opportunities for administrative relief, where our parking standards maybe don't make sense for a particular development. We also asked the consultant to look at parking standards for new modes of transportation, electric vehicles, ride share, those types of items, and how they impact our parking, as well as just seeing, could our parking ordinance use some reorganization? When we initiated this text amendment, we did hear some concerns from planning commission relative to some of the things that we were proposing and that came out of the initial Walker study. And so we want to still explore some of those, but right now, we know that our parking code limits the ability of development to modify parking calculations, and so we want to move that part of this forward as our initial phase in order to allow development to continue moving forward. So we're not putting the rest off indefinitely, but we're taking our time to study parking ratios and some of these other items and moving forward with some relief tools. So one of the recommended actions from the Walker study was to create a parking reduction for our mixed-use zoning districts that were adopted earlier this year, and adopt more extensive administrative parking reduction options. And so that's what we're here before you tonight asking for some feedback on. Existing tools in our code are shared parking. Shared parking allows for a reduction of up to 50% of required parking, and it's based on peak demand. So where one user on a site might have a different peak demand than another user, so that's an existing tool in our code. The other two tools are very similar to one another. They offer an opportunity for deferred parking, and what deferred parking allows for is for an applicant to say that our use doesn't generate this demand, so I'm going to defer construction of all required parking until such time that maybe we need that demand. So it doesn't save a development in terms of land area, because they still have to show us that they can meet the parking requirement, and only defers installation of it. And so there's really limited scope on what somebody can apply for an actual reduction of parking. And so what we wanted to do was propose some changes to our administrative parking reduction section. What we have here is kind of abbreviated language to what's in your staff report, but where a use has some unique parking demand, we would propose that there are some options for them to reduce parking. So reductions between 1% to 10%, an applicant would have an opportunity to apply for administrative relief. That's handled at an administrative level. 1% to 10% is consistent with how we apply administrative relief in our code to other actions, such as reducing setbacks, and so that percentage is consistent. We would also then propose reductions above 10% and up to 25% through an administrative use permit. That requires a minor parking study. Currently, for the reduction options that do exist in our code, we process administrative use permits for those, and they include parking studies. There's a little bit more of a notice requirement for those compared to administrative relief, where an applicant has to provide notice to property owners within 300 feet of their site, and staff takes any feedback they receive into account for our decision. And then our final recommendation is reductions from 25% up to 50% could be approved through a conditional use permit, and that would include a study as well. We are suggesting also modifications to our shared parking section that I already covered, and that would include a parking reduction for the mixed-use zoning districts that were previously adopted. So only the text in capitals would be what's added. And then projects that have special circumstances would also qualify for reduction. Special circumstances are things such as the nature of their business. Maybe they are a medical use that uses large CAT scan machines, and so a specific room that takes up a lot of square footage really only has one or two people that occupy that space. And so we would also provide opportunity for those types of uses to seek a reduction. The process is very similar to those that I covered previously, and really the only difference in this is that they would have to provide us additional documents that demonstrate the unique and special circumstances of their building that limit occupancy essentially. The new code language would also propose requirements for the parking studies. There were minor and major parking studies. The minor parking study would include the base parking ratio for each use mode split, which is the percentage of people that would be expected to drive there versus using some alternate means of transportation. They would provide us some information on the captive reduction of the use, so how many people are on the site for another use. They work there, but then they're also going to the restaurant. And then also the presence factor, so the percentage of daily trips during peak hour. So they would provide us that information for our evaluation. A major parking study would include much of those same things, but it would also include a parking inventory and occupancy count for comparable properties that have similar demand ratios. So that's the addition that would happen if an applicant was seeking the reduction of 25% up to 50% through a conditional use permit that would come to planning commission. And then the code would also outline what the requirements are for those occupancy counts, so that it has to be three times on a weekend, weekday, those types of items. One thing, too, that I wanted to point out, there were some recommended action items from the code for the reorganization of it, and so I just wanted to point that out for the fact that when the ordinance does come before planning commission, it may look like there are some more adjustments than there are if we're choosing to relocate sections and consolidate pieces. So what I've covered today is kind of the bulk of the substantive changes, but when it comes before you, again, you may see some different changes just based on shifting per the recommendation report. So our next steps, we're continuing to review this ordinance with the various departments within development services, or within the town, I'm sorry. We will continue to develop ordinance based on feedback that we hear from you tonight. We plan to take this to the Chamber of Commerce for their feedback and input, and then hopefully be back before you in December for the public hearing where you'll make a recommendation to town council. As I mentioned when I started my presentation, we will continue to work on parking in general, and future phases of this will include exploration of our parking ratios, standards for electrical vehicle charging spaces, and then parking design standards. That is my presentation. I would appreciate any feedback that you have or any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Ashley. Does anybody have any questions or feedback? Commissioner Anderson.
Ashley, thank you for the presentation. Question for you on the category of 25% to 50% reduction. That's a pretty substantial reduction. What types of uses does staff envision that would be acceptable for, or they would support that type of a reduction?
So this is actually one of the primary reasons that staff wanted to bring this to you as a study session item. It was a recommendation from the recommendation report to go 25% to 50% in this category. Historically, staff has not seen requests that high, but our code also currently in the shared parking allows up to 50% reductions, and so we wanted to get your feedback, because I don't have an example for you of somebody that's requested a reduction up to 50%. I think the top that I'm thinking of was in the teens.
Okay, because I can see like an industrial use coming before us, requesting like, you know, some percentage with that range, but if a multifamily became and requested that, I just, I don't see how that would be applicable at all and should be denied, because they just have such high, really high demand for parking with those types of uses. So I just, if we're going to allow or introduce that, those types of higher percentages into the code, I think we just really, really want to understand what types of uses or applicants would be requesting that, and make sure that we're really clear that it's a use that the staff would support, so as not to waste time and money on the applicant's side to chase something down that they just won't get in the first place. So that was kind of the only question, or I guess curiosity I have regarding this text amendment. Thank you.
Chairman and Commissioner, while you were sharing that, I did have another thought that one of the things that we had talked about early on was there are some uses that have really small parking requirements. For example, a storage facility requires eight parking stalls, and so if for some reason, based on their model, you know, they needed fewer than that, their percentage or their percentage reduction is just naturally going to be higher because of how many spaces they require being fewer. And so that was part of our dialogue that I recalled as you kind of, as you talked through that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Vice Chairman Bianchi.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm kind of in agreement with Commissioner Anderson in the direction he was kind of going on those questions. You provided kind of the examples there. I definitely understand the request, especially when we kind of get into shared parking opportunities, especially if they've got differing peak hours of operation. But I guess one of the things, when I look at what you see on the screen there, the question I've got is, so with these reductions that we're potentially doing through use permits, the one thing we'd always say about use permits is, we had the ability to pull it back if it became a problem down the road. I don't know how we do that with parking. If you're granting deviations with parking through a use permit and it becomes a problem down the road, how do we pull that use permit back? So I think we almost lose that in this opportunity. So that'd be one of my concerns kind of going there, but like you had said, you probably don't think you're going to see a lot of reduction requests from 25% to 50%, and there'll probably be more in the teens range. But that's my question going forward is, through that use permit, that's my concern, is how do we pull that back once we've granted that? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Very good point. Anyone else? Commissioner Davis, I see you read.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Ashley, I appreciate all the flexibility that's been built in. I think with parking, you can't ever completely, you know, guess what uses are going to come at us in the future. So much has changed with technology and so on. So I appreciate the flexibility and the fact that staff can really evaluate these things and the detail that you put into the minor study versus the major study and providing that criteria so an applicant has an expectation and knows what they have to provide. As far as the 25% goes, I guess I don't mind it being there as long as it's clear that it's going to be a higher standard to get something like that, because as you said, like a storage unit use is going to have that, you know, that threshold's going to be way different. And again, with different uses out there, there's things that we haven't even anticipated that could come at us, and that does build in that flexibility to look at it as long as it's really carefully evaluated, so we don't get into any problems on that. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner DeGravina?
Thank you. Chairman, my concern is like Commissioner Bianchi's, is that down the road, when the town is completely built out, we'd be able to pull some of these back, because we're going to have increase in electric vehicles. We don't know what that's going to look like. We're going to have increase in traffic and that kind of thing. So if it doesn't work down the road, what kind of requirements, what can we do to make it different so it does fit where we're at with the population flow and the traffic flow and that kind of thing?
Yeah, appreciate that feedback, and that's something that we'll continue to dig into.
One comment I would have on that is, would it make sense to just say a reduction above 25% and not create the illusion that they have a chance to go to 50 by just saying, if you're going to look, or anything above, you know, what would be an administrative use to go to that? I don't know. I think that part of my concern is that by putting the range, it almost makes it seem as though, oh, I could grab 50%. And we all know that developers would never try to do anything like that, but just to be safe, I think it would be wise to look into that a bit. Okay, did you get everything that you needed from us then?
I did. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you, Chair and Commissioner.
Thank you, Ashley. Okay, that concludes the three items for this study session today.
Mr. Chair, we still need the initiation for.
No, we don't. This one's already been initiated.
My apologies. Memory, bad memory.
Illegal. Okay. Okay, we'll have the discussion of the regular meeting agenda, and I know currently we have two items, Town Storage at Wrecker and eight, and DR 2367 Homewood Suites on consent, and then two others on non-consent. We currently don't have any citizen input. Is anyone, oh, yes, we do have somebody here. Which project are you wanting to speak on?
Communications. Did you say communications?
Oh, communications from citizens, not an actual project. Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, then with that, looking at these, does anyone have any reason to pull either eight or nine off of consent, or any issues with moving 10 and 11 to consent? Chicken dinner. Okay. All right. Well, with that, then, we will close the study session and adjourn, and we will come back at 6:00, so we have about 13 minutes to stretch out and enjoy. We'll see you all soon. We'll see you all soon. Speak.
[inaudible]
Now we'll move on to communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. We do have one comment card from Ms. Doraleese Machado-Liddell. Please come up and state your name, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you. You'll have to hit the button to make it go red. There you go. Yep.
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commission members. My name is Doraleese Machado-Liddell. I'm a Gilbert resident. I'm here to speak on the LZ 23-10 LDC text amendment. It's not on the agenda. However, it does say it's a citizen review, but I didn't hear any citizens, and I didn't hear any reviews. I just don't understand that portion of it. I know it says initiation, however, this is an important text amendment, or whatever it's called, because it does affect property rights. People have property rights that have existed in Gilbert. This is something regarding secondary dwellings. A secondary dwelling has been allowed, a guest dwelling, not a dwelling, a guest quarters has been allowed. There's been two reasons why you have a secondary dwelling. A secondary dwelling is that you are able to have a stove, and you are able to rent it. In the code, you do not have to live in your primary residence. You can rent out both. I have a secondary dwelling unit. I paid impact fees. I hope that everybody else will pay those impact fees if they consider having a guest quarters or a secondary dwelling unit. I think that we have to look at that. Two years ago, when they did go through the LDC, they did have a transparent process. The mayor had a subcommittee. There were three council members and the planning commission, planning staff member. I hope that this process is one that is transparent. This will affect people's property rights. Not every property is the same. You may have a small house on a property which would be fronting the road. Maybe it's 600 square feet. If you limit something that is going to be smaller than your primary resident, then you, or residents, then you will be limiting the ability to build. So I just say that and hope that, and I wish that staff would be directed to have a transparent process, one in which the citizens of Gilbert would be able to see what is going on, because I don't know what to speak on at a citizen review if I don't know what they're changing. So that's what I ask. I think that we need to look at it, however, it needs to be flexible, and we need to look at land development fees, because that is key. And so when we're doing this, I just hope that it's a transparent process, and I thank you for your time. And hopefully, we'll have the questions that I heard that were robust during the parking, that that is the same thing that is applied to accessory dwelling units or secondary dwellings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Doraleese. And then I would encourage the staff to possibly reach out or get an email from Doraleese so that she could be made abreast of the process as it goes, to be sure the transparency is there. I was assuming that was possibly commenting on criticism, so, from the legal vantage point. Okay. All right. That concludes the communications. I'd like to move on to the report from the council liaison on current events and go to Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for my tardiness. It takes a while to get from the airport to hear it during rush hour. First off, I want to congratulate those of you that were sworn in by the mayor last month. I missed that, but I do want to congratulate those of you that were sworn in, and I really appreciate her filling in for me at that time. Couple of items. One is, our annual fall retreat is being held this Monday and Tuesday, the 6th and the 7th, where we will be tackling issues that will be facing the town in the future as we approach build-out. There will be many financial challenges, not only because of inflation and supply chain issues, all sorts of items that we have to discuss. So if you're interested in learning more about how we make sausage in Gilbert, come and attend with us. We'll be at the Southeast Regional Library all day, Monday and Tuesday, discussing various issues. The other is, you are aware that Gilbert Days is coming up this month in November, the 17th and 18th. The 18th is the day of the parade, so I'd encourage you to participate in those activities. It's a lot of fun at that annual event. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Okay, moving on to the public hearing consent. All items listed below are considered a public hearing consent calendar. The commission may, by a single motion, approve any number of items where after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item to be removed from the consent calendar. So with that, I'll just look to the audience to confirm that there are no individuals seeking to speak on any of the agendized items. Okay, seeing none, then I will open it up for a motion on the consent. And as an update, the consent, of course, is eight and nine, and also 10Z 23-05 and 11DR 22-155. Chair, if you're ready for a motion?
Chair, if you're ready for a motion? I would propose keeping the consent agenda as presented with the following changes, adding Item 10Z 23-05 and Items 11DR 22-155 to the consent calendar as well.
Okay, thank you. Eva, could I get a roll call, please?
Alternate Everett. Alternate DeGrevino.
Present.
Commissioner Simon.
Here.
Commissioner Gage.
Here.
Commissioner Fay. Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Bianchi.
Here.
Chairman Munt.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving right along, we'll go into the approval of last month's agenda, and I will entertain a motion, if there is one, or any discussion.
For this month's. Yeah, Chairman, if you're ready for a motion? I would propose keeping the consent agenda as presented with the following changes, adding Item 10Z 23-05 and Items 11DR 22-155 to the consent calendar as well.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from the vice chairman to move 10 and 11 to the consent. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a second from Commissioner Davis. Is there any discussion? Very well, please vote. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. We do have one comment card from Ms. Doraleese Machado-Liddell. Please come up and state your name, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you. You'll have to hit the button to make it go red. There you go. Yep.
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commission members. My name is Doraleese Machado-Liddell. I'm a Gilbert resident. I'm here to speak on the LZ 23-10 LDC text amendment. It's not on the agenda. However, it does say it's a citizen review, but I didn't hear any citizens, and I didn't hear any reviews. I just don't understand that portion of it. I know it says initiation, however, this is an important text amendment, or whatever it's called, because it does affect property rights. People have property rights that have existed in Gilbert. This is something regarding secondary dwellings. A secondary dwelling has been allowed, a guest dwelling, not a dwelling, a guest quarters has been allowed. There's been two reasons why you have a secondary dwelling. A secondary dwelling is that you are able to have a stove, and you are able to rent it. In the code, you do not have to live in your primary residence. You can rent out both. I have a secondary dwelling unit. I paid impact fees. I hope that everybody else will pay those impact fees if they consider having a guest quarters or a secondary dwelling unit. I think that we have to look at that. Two years ago, when they did go through the LDC, they did have a transparent process. The mayor had a subcommittee. There were three council members and the planning commission, planning staff member. I hope that this process is one that is transparent. This will affect people's property rights. Not every property is the same. You may have a small house on a property which would be fronting the road. Maybe it's 600 square feet. If you limit something that is going to be smaller than your primary resident, than you, or residence, then you will be limiting the ability to build. So I just say that and hope that, and I wish that staff would be directed to have a transparent process, one in which the citizens of Gilbert would be able to see what is going on, because I don't know what to speak on at a citizen review if I don't know what they're changing. So that's what I ask. I think that we need to look at it, however, it needs to be flexible, and we need to look at land development fees, because that is key. And so when we're doing this, I just hope that it's a transparent process, and I thank you for your time. And hopefully, we'll have the questions that I heard that were robust during the parking, that that is the same thing that is applied to accessory dwelling units or secondary dwellings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Doraleese. And then I would encourage the staff to possibly reach out or get an email from Doraleese so that she could be made abreast of the process as it goes, to be sure the transparency is there. I was assuming that was possibly commenting on criticism, so, from the legal vantage point. Okay. All right. That concludes the communications. I'd like to move on to the report from the council liaison on current events and go to Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for my tardiness. It takes a while to get from the airport to hear it during rush hour. First off, I want to congratulate those of you that were sworn in by the mayor last month. I missed that, but I do want to congratulate those of you that were sworn in, and I really appreciate her filling in for me at that time. Couple of items. One is, our annual fall retreat is being held this Monday and Tuesday, the 6th and the 7th, where we will be tackling issues that will be facing the town in the future as we approach build-out. There will be many financial challenges, not only because of inflation and supply chain issues, all sorts of items that we have to discuss. So if you're interested in learning more about how we make sausage in Gilbert, come and attend with us. We'll be at the Southeast Regional Library all day, Monday and Tuesday, discussing various issues. The other is, you are aware that Gilbert Days is coming up this month in November, the 17th and 18th. The 18th is the day of the parade, so I'd encourage you to participate in those activities. It's a lot of fun at that annual event. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Okay, moving on to the public hearing consent. All items listed below are considered a public hearing consent calendar. The commission may, by a single motion, approve any number of items where after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item to be removed from the consent calendar. So with that, I'll just look to the audience to confirm that there are no individuals seeking to speak on any of the agendized items. Okay, seeing none, then I will open it up for a motion on the consent. And as an update, the consent, of course, is eight and nine, and also 10Z 23-05 and 11DR 22-155.